Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 27, 2023 Regular Meeting for Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. And we're going to begin our meeting today with an invocation from Dr. Keith Vereen, and he is the Providence Baptist Church pastor, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Limble. I want you all to please stand, and I'll invite Dr. Vereen up, and we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards, led by Commissioner Limble.
Good afternoon. Let's pray. For God Almighty, you are our Almighty. So we pray for your presence in the midst of these proceedings this afternoon. God, we pray for government. We pray for those who have submitted themselves to service. We pray for this community, our first responders, our caregivers, those who are our medical professionals. We pray, God, that we are able to live together, that we're able to grow together, and that we're able to prosper together. For God, we pray for your preeminence and your divine providence in every decision that is made. At every sound of the gavel, God, we pray that you are represented. This is our prayer. And let those who are redeemed of the Lord say, amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) states of America, to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Vereen, thank you again for coming today. We appreciate that. Citizens who are interested in participating in the public portion of the meeting, you actually can do so if you're watching online, and you can actually call us at 336-422-1200, and you'll be placed on hold until we get to that point in the agenda, which will be just a little bit of time. We have a couple fairly routine public hearings. Any member of the audience who is here and wishing to participate in the public session, you need to fill out a speaker card and return it to our clerk, who is seated at the end, Mrs. Ashley Matthews. All righty. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing on an ordinance amendment to amend Chapters 3 and 11 of the Unified Development Ordinance to ensure consistency in application of site distance in triangle, site distance triangle provisions. And you'll see a picture of that. And Eric Erickson from Plan Development Services, Deputy Director, is going to give us an overview, and we're ready to go.
Thank you, Chairman Barton, and good afternoon, Mr. Manager of Commissioners. In 2021, the North Carolina Legislature adopted new language specifying that the measure for site distances at intersections, this would include site triangles, those areas that are basically off limits for development to preserve site distance, must begin at the right-of-way or edge-of-pavement for municipalities. Prior to the adoption of this language, municipalities handled site triangles through a variety of different methods. Current UDO definition for site triangles states that these triangles shall be measured starting at the edge of the right-of-way, and this definition is currently city-specific, but site triangles are consistently requested by the North Carolina Department of Transportation using the same standard throughout Forsyth County, including the unincorporated neighborhoods. This proposed amendment will amend the definition of site triangles to state that the measurements do begin at the edge of pavement per statute, which has been in place since 2021, and will change the definition to a county-wide definition and replace the existing graphic. Just to show you, the existing graphic is on the left there, showing that, if you can kind of see, the sign is outside of this site triangle here, but the site triangle moves to where it's shown on the right side of the screen. The sign could get a little closer to the intersection, giving the property owner more developable land on their property. This item was heard by the Planning Board in February. They held a public hearing, and there were no speakers in opposition. It was unanimously to elected bodies, and adopted by City Council and the man. I'm glad to answer any questions of the question.
Any question for Kirk?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just wanted to note a concern that I raised during the previous briefing on this item. Kirk, can you take it back to the illustrative sketch? Now, I'll have to vote in favor of the amendment because it's comporting our ordinance with the new requirements of state law. I'm concerned, however, that that's going to result in more hazards at intersections, particularly hazards for pedestrians, because if you look at that, that's visible on your screen, I'm presuming that it's visible for folks who are viewing the meeting remotely, the existing UDO measurement to the left allows the car to obey the stop bar that presumably is going to be before they reach where the sidewalk crosses at that intersection. The new requirement for how you calculate that requires the car to actually move up far enough to block the sidewalk crossing of the intersection. That is a hazard for pedestrians, and I specifically ask and just want to confirm my request that staff communicate to our legislative delegation a concern about that new worsened pedestrian crossing hazard.
I believe Chris Murphy deferred to the county attorney on that when he was briefing on that. I'll refer to Mr. Watkins to...
I mean, the state law obviously hasn't changed, but if that's a concern of the board, we can certainly communicate that.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
All righty. Any more questions for Kirk? This is a public hearing, and speakers will have up to 15 minutes to speak total in favor of this request, and up to 15 minutes total to speak in opposition. And is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? All righty. I declare the public hearing closed. Do we have a motion?
No, they've approved them.
Motion is approved by Vice Chair Whiston-Hunt. Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on an ordinance amendment to amend Chapter 10 of the Unified Development Ordinance to revise the membership structure of the Forsyth County Historic Resources Commission, UDO CC22, and Kirk's going to give us a review of that.
All right. This item, just a little bit of background, the Historic Resources Commission is a 12-member board, five members appointed by the City Council, five members appointed by you all, one member appointed by the Village of Flemings, and one member appointed by the County Council. Currently, City Winston-Salem has one at-large member they appoint and four categorical members. County appoints three at-large members, categorical members, licensed architect, and a local historic landmark property owner. Categorical seats have been based on residence location and professional qualifications. Someone who lives in... Someone who lives in the age of... Archaeologist, landscape architect, arborist planner, or surveyor, and finally, an architectural historian. This request would change the archaeologist, landscape architect, arborist planner, and surveyor seat, and the architectural historian seat. The roots for this categorical makeup are in the 1948 board... ...history, which was created when the HRC went into existence, and this was at a time when the Planning Board did not have professional historic staff. The HRC has two full-time staff members to meet the federal professional qualification standard. Architecture, we are certified local government by the state, and that shows that we have the ability to be someone volunteer capacity. This may draw on the pool of potential... Also bring the HRC into line with the membership structure of the commissions and... ...the state. Durham County is the only place in size that has any categorical appointments. And it will also have no impact on the current membership in these professional categories. Fire in November 2020... And the city has... So it's not going to be an issue. Summary, the HRC recommended this change after discussion, and it's July 2022 retreat. The change was presented to the Development Housing General Government Committee as an information item last October. After a presentation of public hearing at which no community member spoke prior to this year, Planning Board recommended approval of the amendment. Adopted by City Council in June 5, and again, there is nothing about this amendment that affects the county improvements. We're just seeking that...
Any questions for Kirk? All righty. This is a public hearing. Speakers will have up to 15 minutes total to speak in favor of this request, up to 15 minutes total to speak in opposition. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Not seen anyone. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? Declare the public hearing closed.
Move approve.
Is there a motion? Got a motion by Commissioner Plyler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Third item on the agenda is a public hearing on an ordinance amendment to amend miscellaneous sections of the Unified Development Ordinance to provide minor non-substantive changes and clarifications, UDO CC23, and Kirk will review it. Thank you.
All right. Again, Commissioners, this is the last planning item on the agenda today. As a little bit of background, amendments for non-substantive changes to the UDO are periodically. Make sure we keep the ordinance up to date and provide clarifications for administration, citizens, and potential... Non-substantive changes are revisions that have no effect on the intent or enforceability of the ordinance, and revisions are proposed when staff discovers unintentional omissions often as a result of changes made in previous amendments to the code. And if some of these come from the transition, if you all remember from about three or four years ago, when we went from the UDO to the UDO... This is a brief summary of what's in here, and then we'll get to the nuts and bolts. This amendment includes two minor changes to the zoning map amendment process, one minor change to establishing a neighborhood conservation section, two in omission of the principal advising specifics, and reserving a non-informing subsection of Chapter 9, and revising definitions in that section of the ordinance. Related to the zoning map amendment section, neighborhood outreach summaries must now include outcomes. Outreach process took place. That's something that we ran into some issues. Outreach, but it wasn't what the results of that were. And so the board is always having to ask petitioner, what did the neighbors say when you brought this in? This would codify that and make it clear for petitioners. Part of a pre-application conference for special use district limited districts has also been removed. That's something the staff hasn't used specifically in the... We're already talking to petitioners when they submit their zoning case, that there wasn't ever any need to have application conferences, different touchpoints that serve that same point. Process already. Moving on to the next provision, the neighborhood conservation overlay district standards are being modified to require signatures to support all property owners. NCO... Require lots larger than the underlying zoning district, for example, from a neighborhood character, and this would help us conform with NC 160D and the general statutes. That's where the department comes from. Moving to the next item, we're adding a reference to the U specific that prohibit electronic sweepstake operations in Winston... ...that are prohibited. You made it clear for ways, and over the years, that electronic sweepstakes operations have not been allowed in unincorporated... ...with the state by adopting this language. Moving on to the next section, there's a couple changes to planned residential developments, which are those subdivisions that allow small lots in exchange for... ...from an open space. And the first change is removing the three acre minimum site size requirement for GMAs three and four. Again, this is something that the Planning Board asked for specifically after they adopted, and you all adopted cottage core provisions in 2022. That also allows for smaller lots, and the... ...on parity between that type of development and... Second change in this category is removing the five acre minimum site size for PRDs with multiple single-family dwellings on the same lot. That would be for basically rental type communities of single... ...of the county's... And again, it was the staff's opinion that it would make sense to allow this, whether someone had five acres, or whether you were... Also, with planned residential development, this amendment would substitute a 20-foot wide Type 1 buffer yard for a 30-foot undimined buffer yard that's currently in the ordinance. Undimined buffer yard in the ordinance already, the Type 1 buffer yard, and this would help ensure consistency. Site planners know what's wrong on the plan, if they're already familiar with that buffer yard from their other types of projects, and our enforcement staff would know the number of plants they're looking for. Amendment would require fencing around private swimming pools to meet requirements of the NC bill. Originally had some language in there that we... ...as a community, that ran afoul of what was in the current 20... Getting towards the end here, in Chapter 9, we reserved a special use permit parking requirement section, and that actually had been removed by previous Winston-Salem amendment. Rather than renumbering everything in the code, we just wrote reserve. Finally, various definitions were fixed to replace unnecessary definitions and remove duplicate definitions, unnecessary references. That's something that, as I alluded to in the... Public hearing was held by the Planning Board on April 13 of this year. Proposition, following the public hearing, we're voted to recommend approval on a 6-2 vote, two opposition votes. One of those was related to... PRD buffer yard change was more... ...that person was comfortable, other person was uncomfortable with removing application conference requirement for limited... Was adopted unanimously by City Council in June. Glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kirk?
I have one on the item that you mentioned. Go back to the buffer yard. Does the staff see any problem with that, or does this end up with less buffer than what is currently?
Obviously, in terms of the width, it will end up with less, going from a 30-foot width between the back of a lot and the joining property, so you're going to lose 10 feet. But you're going to have more plants in that area, so it's going to be more concentrated of a screen. Staff and the board felt that even though you're losing a little bit of width there, you're still going to have that visual buffer, which was really... And that's something that it's a matter of personal consideration. The staff and the board felt that this was...
On a PRD, and where there is existing, if it's a wooded track, say most of it, and it's got some kind of vegetation or trees, it seems like sometimes, for reasons that I don't know, want to take down or take away existing things that could be used for buffer yard. Can you explain that? I can't...
Commissioner Limble, that's a very good point. Certainly, a lot of these tracks that are being developed are wooded, and some developers would rather go in and... ...buy your property, basically, for edge, and then plant their own buffer yards. At the end, they do that because it's a little bit easier when they're here, seeing the lots, if there's any topography there, and they're trying to get the pads for those concrete slabs. Most new construction does have slab-on-grade practice rather than a... ...ball space. That being said, the UDO and staff certainly encourage those to be... ...that existing vegetation. Credit for that, so that might be the more cost-effective way to do it. Again, I think a lot of developers prefer the flexibility that comes with the ...here.
Mr. Chairman, I got another question related to, be a buffer yard question, but it's not related to this, when this is done... Would this is done, I would like to ask him another question.
That's great. And if I understand Commissioner Lindell's first question, I assume the thirty foot current thirty foot width is also a type one buffer yard?
No, that's the problem is our E section just talks about a buffer yard and it tries to explain what the plantings should look like, but it's not tied to any of the three official types of buffer yard in the U D O. Something that was actually inserted probably fifteen years ago into the P R D ordinance, and it never really corresponded to something that our staff are training to enforce or something that site plan preparers aren't used to using. That is in effect the rub here, and since there's no thirty foot buffer yard, there's a twenty foot type one, a forty foot type one, a hundred foot. That's why we tried to go with the closest map.
And so if, if I'm understanding your answer in the context of his question is that the type one buffer yard is almost universally because it specifies the types of plants and so forth, it's going to be more densely populated with plants than what may be in an undesigned thirty foot wide buffer yard?
That's right. It's going to have some large variety, deciduous trees, it's going to have some evergreen screening, and it's going to have some shrubs.
So the purpose of the buffer yard may actually be enhanced and better with a type, with the type one specified buffer yard, even though it's only twenty feet?
That's right. It's again, kind of analogous to now again, the twenty foot, forty foot, a hundred foot buffer yard. If you're doing that buffer yard, the same plantings and the forty foot. A lot of times the twenty foot is actually the better screen for neighborhood. Clustered together more, there's visual spaces.
Got it. Any, any additional questions?
A follow-up, if I may. Um, I know that we have state statutory limits on what we can require through planning ordinances. Do we have anything in there that we are allowed to do that incentivizes retention of what Commissioner Lindell's talking about, sort of natural wooded buffer where it exists?
There's certainly, in my understanding of the statute, since it wouldn't be a requirement, it would be an incentive, there's certainly the ability for jurisdictions to come up. What that would look like, I'm not specifically sure, and there's different things to offer in terms of. Element density or other things. So I guess Commissioner Bessie, the short answer is yes, but it would kind of depend on what the care would be.
Do we have anything in our current ordinance that does that or seeks to do that?
Just the incentive that basically this is, you don't have to buy or pay somebody else to plant it. Call a wall, you'd be required to.
Can, not for today, obviously, but can you investigate alternatives that provide additional incentives, for example, by way of density?
Yeah, we can do that.
And I, I would welcome that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All righty. This is a public hearing. Speakers will have up to fifteen minutes total to speak in favor of this request, up to fifteen minutes total to speak in opposition. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? I will declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Pliler to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? In favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Lindell, please ask your second question.
If Kirk's going to stay here, we get done with the official meeting, I can wait till then, but if he's going to leave us, then I will ask him now.
I will be glad to do that for you, Commissioner Lindell. Talk about this online if you can.
Okay. All right. Very good. All right. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing the fiftieth anniversary of hip hop and the contributions of Patrick Dowd, also known as Ninth Wonder to hip hop. By the way, this proclamation was presented, I believe.
Monday night.
Monday night.
Yes.
And already seen, so we typically don't need to read it over. Any comment you'd like to make, Commissioner Woodbury?
Yes, Chairman Martin, I just want to thank the community for an overwhelmingly successful event that really displayed the diversity and, um, the, the commitment to, to come out and, and, and just share with each other, um, the, the different cultures that make up our community. And I would tell you that from seventy to probably fifteen years old, we had people in the audience. We had Hispanic people, white people, black people. It was an amazing rainbow of people in our community because I, as most people sometimes don't know that hip hop really is influenced by a lot of other genres of music. And so all of that music was presented through, um, the scholarship of Mr. Patrick Dowd. His parents were front row and were so, so very pleased that the county recognized their son, um, as a citizen of, um, this county. So I just really want to thank especially this board of commissioners for allowing Mia and Fleming Elamine, um, to present to the community and to Patrick Dowd, also known as the Ninth Wonder, and his parents with this proclamation. So thank you.
All right. We'll now take an actual motion to approve. Is there a motion? I assume.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Woodbury, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel and Commissioner Pliler. Any discussion? In favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the meeting of June the twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Move approval. Motion to approve by, uh, Commissioner Pliler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wittenhut. Any discussion? On those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And clerk, do we have any calls first or cards?
Mr. Chairman, we don't have any callers, but we have seven speaker cards.
All righty.
Our first speaker is Al Wadu Jabar. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Chair Martin. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Al Wadu Jabar. I live at six seventeen, Daffodil Drive, Tunnisville, North Carolina, two seven, two eight four. I wanted to come before you today twofold. First, I want to despair any conversation that the N double A C P supports or endorses political candidates. First, allow me to read our mission and vision statement, after which I will share with you that our bylaws for unit prohibits the N double A C P and its units from supporting or endorsing candidates. The mission and vision of the N double A C P, the mission of the National Association for Advancement of Colored People is to ensure the political, educational, social, economic equality of rights of all persons and to eliminate race-based discrimination. Our vision, the vision of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People is to ensure in which all individuals have equal rights without discrimination based on race. Article two, section two D of the bylaws for the units of the N double A C P states that all political action should be nonpartisan and shall not endorse candidates for public office. Furthermore, article ten, section two of article eight of the bylaws for the unit of the N double A C P states that when an individual becomes a member of the N double A C P, that invi- that individual pledges to abide by the rules and policies of the association and the decision of the Board of Directors. I want to take a few seconds to stop and thank Board Chair, Don Martin, who served as a superintendent of Forsyth County Schools for nineteen years. Vice Chair Gloria Wittenhut sat on the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education from nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-six. Commissioner Malachay Woodbury served as Board Chair of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School District for four years and still works in the field of education. Dave, Commissioner Pliler, we want to thank your daughter, who is an education educator for the district. I want to thank Commissioner Dan Beezy, Commissioner Tonya McDaniel for being active members of the N double A C P. The second reason I'm here today is to ask you to be sponsors of five students at two thousand dollars each, who will be going off to college in the fall. We have only been able to give each student a thousand dollars each for a total of five thousand dollars. We're asking you today if you would support us with ten thousand dollars, which would allow five students to receive two thousand dollars each. Thank you and have a blessed day.
All right.
Eunice Campbell, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Eunice Campbell, fifty-seven forty-three Antinam Drive, Winston-Salem. Thank you for granting me the opportunity to address you today on behalf of an initiative that is close to my heart. Today I stand before you to request your support and investment in the future of five bright individuals as they embark on their journey through higher education. Five remarkable scholars who have demonstrated exceptional academic achievements, leadership potential, and a genuine thirst for knowledge. They have shown the determination and resilience needed to succeed. However, without financial assistance from as many sources as possible, their dreams may be unfulfilled. As the Chair of the Education Committee of the N double A C P, as a member of the Coalition for Accountability and Transparency, and a member of the Coalition for Equity and Public Education, I stand before you with the utmost honesty and transparency. Despite challenges, the cause of the National N double A C P remains vigil, and the impact we can make is undeniable. I talk to students every day. As a matter of fact, if I wasn't standing here today before you, I would be at a Freedom School, which is summer, which is a summer literacy camp. And I tell students, study, do what's right, stay focused, and you will be rewarded. So when this opportunity came to come before the county commissioners and ask to help five individual students to show them that what I've been saying is true, to add to that, to be that cherry on top, I, I had no problem. Two thousand dollars for a freshman first semester would be a game changer. It really would. And being able to be a part of that, them being able to fulfill it, it's, it's what I do. It's why I get up in the morning. It's why I have been advocating for parents and students for over fifteen years in this district. We promise them that we will help them through. We promise them that we would be there for them. And sometimes it goes beyond building buildings and, but just putting things in their heart. I'll leave you with this phrase, the whole is larger than the sum of its parts. This phrase reminds us of the significance of interconnectness, collaboration, and holistic thinking. By recognizing and leveraging the collective potential of a system or group, we can achieve greater outcomes and solutions than if we were to focus only on individual components in isolation. Thank you once again.
I'd just like to remind everybody that, no, you're, thank you. I just want to remind everybody that I will be keeping time and we get to kind of looking at three minutes, and I didn't say that at the very beginning, and I'll just say it now for our remaining speakers. Thank you.
Nidra Dozier, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. I am Dr. Nidra Dozier. I live at two sixteen Williams Gate Court in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. My zip code is two seven, one zero seven. I am the Chair of the Scholarship Committee with the N double A C P, and I too am here to garner support for scholarships for our students. Since two, excuse me, since twenty nineteen, I have served in this capacity, not including this current year. We have awarded twenty students of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Systems totaling seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. For the past three years, we have not been able to have our Freedom Fund Gala, which is one of our top fundraisers where we garner support, we sell tickets, um, and bring people in for the community. Some of the money goes towards the scholarships and the rest of the money goes towards operating expenses. So last year, we only were able to give our students five hundred dollars apiece. The pandemic did take, um, a lot of us out with that. So, um, I have two other students here today whose name is also there, also to garner scholarships for these kids. Um, we do try to give away five each year. That's the way it has been done, and we try to support the students. I also reach out to the students afterwards just to make sure students are still in school. And if they, you know, need additional resources in the community, we try to also connect them with those resources as well. So today I just implore you, if you could support our students that apply for these scholarships, some of them are first generational college students, some of them have never gone to college before or their parents. Um, thank you.
Devonte Harrison, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. I am Devonte Harrison. I also reside at two sixteen Williams Gate Court in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, zip code two seven, one zero seven. I am here standing as a former recipient of this said scholarship. Um, I was privileged to have gone to Winston-Salem State University and graduate with my Bachelor of Science in Accounting degree with the Information Systems Concentration. If it was not for this scholarship, I don't believe that I would have been able to go to school debt-free. This was one of the first scholarships that I received, um, upon graduating from East Forsyth High School in twenty eighteen, and it just lit something in me to continue to go out and ask for, you know, gain other scholarships and things, and that all helped me go and receive my Bachelor of Science in Accounting degree. Um, I did want to also read the mission statement of the N double A C P, and it reads, "The mission of the N double A C P is to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic, 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 excuse me, equality of rights of all persons to and to eliminate racial hatred and racial discrimination." A word that really, really stood out to me in this mission statement is the word to ensure. We as members of the N double A C P cannot ensure that students come behind us or, you know, can have the opportunities that we've had or even a better opportunity if we do not have this money in place. So I just come to say your consideration of this scholarship is very important to myself, not only to myself, but those who have come with us as well, and to the, the future of Winston-Salem, this whole world. Thank you.
Ashton Milton, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Ashton Milton, and I live at forty eighty Heatherview Lane, two seven, one two seven. Um, I'm a member of the Winston-Salem, um, branch of the N O A C P, the Youth and College Division, and I am also a twenty twenty graduate of Atkins High School. I entered Winston-Salem State University during the COVID nineteen pandemic. I'm a nursing major and a public health minor, um, so I'm excited about graduation in May of twenty twenty-four. The National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, also known as the N O A C P, was founded in nineteen oh nine with the mission of securing the constitutional rights guaranteed to every citizen by the Thirteenth Amendment, which promised an end to slavery. The Fourteenth Amendment, which provided equal protection of the law, and the Fifteenth Amendment, which guaranteed. which provided equal protection of the law; and the 15th Amendment, which guaranteed the right to vote. Even now, the NAACP continues its mission of political, racial, and educational equality for minority citizens. Today, the NAACP continues the work of innovation, equality, and equity in education. In 2020, I was a recipient of the scholarship from the Winston-Salem branch of the NAACP. As a daughter of a single mother, the scholarship held the many expenses associated with higher education. It enabled me to buy books, supplies, and a much-needed laptop for online learning during the pandemic. The first year of college can be a difficult transition from high school, and the financial assistance for students like me was very appreciated. I am honored to have received the scholarship, and I will continue to speak of the valuable work that is done by this organization and how the NAACP still impacts the lives of students.
Bishop Mack, please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Greetings to each of you, and glad to know that someone is keeping time for this Baptist preacher. And good to see you, to the Chair, Vice Chair. Certainly, I am thankful to be able to stand today, Union Baptist Church, 1200 North Trey Street, representing. When I heard that there was a meeting for other support of these young people, I don't know if there's much more to say, to say much more than what we just heard. COVID has done a work on all of us. When you hear that there's 140 million people living in poverty in this country, 68 million who have to work two and three jobs to make ends meet every day, 38 million children that go to bed hungry every night, 65% of African-American students have to make a decision between going to school or finding a job or supporting their families when they go to college. This, to me, must happen. When we have crime and gun violence, when I sit there talking about money to support them in our jails, et cetera, we're talking about getting money to support these students to go to school. I thought we were going to be discussing $50,000, $100,000. There are programs that we do support that's of much greater value in terms of scholarships. $10,000, it's almost embarrassing for us as city leaders and those of us who I know we have education close to our heart. I've served with many of you in various capacities, and I know your love for education. So I think that this would be a great reward to these young people to have your vote of approval. I went to school on scholarships. I couldn't have got through Elon or Duke University without support in this regard. So I hope that you all would just give a nod and support to these young people, and let's push them as a community. It's going to take all of us. The churches are doing what they can. There's a church now in New York City with a group of students. We're working with them on Sunday mornings. We started a school on Sunday mornings to help them with literacy. It's going to take all of us. And certainly, I know that you would vote in the right way to give these students what they need to ensure their success. God bless you, and good to see all of you.
18 seconds to spare.
Our last speaker is Angela Daniels. Please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Angela Daniels. My address is 1790 Woodstone Drive, here in the beautiful city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27127. Allow me to share a personal story. I am 53 years young. When I graduated from high school, my hopes and desires was to go to college, like my cousins and them, family and friends. And they were able to go, but the income in my household was not supportive of me, raised by my auntie, who raised her three kids, as well as myself. Just not enough money for me to be able to go to where I wanted to go, which was Virginia Union to study psychology. All the roads led to it, but guess what? Ironically enough, I was $2,000 short and not being able to go. My aunt didn't have the funds. My sister cousin didn't either. So guess what? I had to come back, find my way in working in temporary agencies, working and choosing a career. Here I am, standing before you now, 53 years young, in an adult learning school at Winston-Salem State University, pursuing my degree. What I do not want is what happened to me to happen to anyone else. We don't know the household incomes for people. We don't know what people's statuses are. We're not here to judge. All I do know is that there are five young people that need an education. They need to be able to be supportive and be able to walk with their heads up, saying I wasn't denied for $1, $5, $500, $2,000. Like my pastor just said, I would have hoped that we were here for a $500,000 scholarship as well. But be it so, we need you, you, and you. You are wonderful people. I see the work that you do in the community. You work hard. There are some alums that are here. I am working in the Higher Education of Winston-Salem State University. My role is Director of Community Engagement and Donor Relations. And what we do is navigate, connect the dots. I'm here to connect with you and ask you and plea on your heart and ask you to vote check yes. We are going to support the NAACP, one, because it's the right thing to do. We're always complaining about what our kids are not doing, what they should do, but what is it that we should do to help them be successful? Can't worry about this, that, and the third. What we do need to worry about is education, because the cost of living is high. People need education to be able to do what they need to do, whether it's Forsyth Tech, Winston-Salem State, Wake Forest. There's a whole lot of means out there for a whole lot of people, but there's not enough means for some people. And I am reaching out to you, you, and you to please say yes. Don't let them be another person like myself. Yes, adult learner is great, and I'm super excited about all I'm doing to get my education, but if they can do it the first time and have the support that they need and no one telling them no, it would be a great accomplishment. I am feeling confident right about now that you all would make the right choice and the right decision to not deny anyone of any walk, any creed, any race, to get what they need. Thank you, and God bless you.
That's it. Thank you. Thank all of you for speaking, and we'll have some conversation later about this. Mr. Manager, we're ready for you to continue with our meeting. Thank you.
All right. Now, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, board members and staff and guests. We do have some business items for consideration this afternoon. We have reviewed these in briefing sessions, and hopefully have answered all the questions. I'll go ahead and dive in. Agenda item seven is a resolution authorizing expenditure of opioid settlement funds. You've got an associated amendment to the North Carolina Opioid Settlement Special Revenue Fund. It's going to appropriate $51,299 for the FROSS program, which is that initiative around opioid preparedness and intervention and so on.
Move approval. Move approval. Motion approved by Commissioner Plaller.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizinhat. Any discussion? In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Agenda item eight is an amendment to the fiscal year 2023/2024 budget ordinance that appropriates $114,850 of a reserved behavioral health services fund balance for repairs and updates to the Sturmer House property. That is that property that's owned by the county. We are trying to get it converted into a 24-hour residential facility for kids who are at DSS and in the lobby at the current time, and hopefully see some improvement with that.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Plaller. Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item nine is a grant matter. It's a resolution authorizing execution of necessary documents to apply for and accept if awarded a reducing infant mortality in communities grant from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. It is a three-year grant up to $305,302.
Move approval. Motion approved by Commissioner Plaller. Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item 10 is a resolution authorizing execution of necessary documents to apply for and accept if awarded Golden Leaf funds to the Community-Based Grants Initiative for workforce and economic development, agricultural programs, and projects. If I could get Andrea Sheets to come up. If you remember when we briefed this, we said that we were kind of stepping through a process to determine what to submit to Golden Leaf. That meeting happened. Matt Pennington's with her. Matt is our intern, but he participated in one of the efforts, and so he's going to present as well as Andrea. So I'll turn it over to her to show you what the upshot of was based on the meeting with Golden Leaf.
Good to see you all again. So our staff met with the Golden Leaf staff, where they kind of gave their feedback on the six projects that we submitted in Forsyth County, and kind of broke them into two categories. There were two projects that they said had very high potential, and then four that they said had a few more challenges to work through in order for them to really be competitive. So based on that feedback, the two that we are recommending be endorsed for Golden Leaf funding is one from Forsyth Tech to improve the instructional capacity of their EMS program through a simulation lab and virtual reality. And then the second is an application from the county for Tanglewood Business Park. And so the 310 total for Forsyth Tech EMS would construct a simulation lab, which will increase the physical capacity for instruction, provide more space, replicate the physical space of the ambulance. They're going to do some stuff with hydraulics to simulate a moving ambulance and train some of those situations that are really difficult to replicate when they're not in the field. Some early conversations with other healthcare partners say that this space could be used for trainings that are also really difficult to replicate in the hospitals around safety. Overall, really help the trainings area in the healthcare sector here. And then virtual reality and simulation is an area that a lot of Forsyth Tech's other programs, especially in health sciences, have successfully used to overcome instructor shortages. And so this will allow for more instructors and more students to go through this program. And then Tanglewood Business Park, Matt will talk about.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. As Andrea stated previously, the Tanglewood Business Park recommendation for application is a request for 1.19 million, which will be used for infrastructure improvements, specifically improving water and sewage capabilities as well as natural gas improvements. These improvements will make the site suitable for industrial facilities, as well as make the site more attractive for economic development. Previously, Golden Leaf had invested funds into the Tanglewood Business Park site through environmental engineering and for due diligence reports. We will be leveraging those funds, as well as funds from the North Carolina Department of Commerce and previous county investments.
You would say a couple more things? Go ahead, and then I got a couple questions. Go ahead.
So just to refresh and follow up on the other four submitted projects, Golden Leaf set some pretty clear priorities that the county also shared with external organizations. And those other four projects, Golden Leaf said that just were not in alignment for various reasons. So happy to answer any other questions about this process.
All right. I want to make sure I understand this last slide, because actually, I was going to ask the, you mentioned X number of projects that Golden Leaf was certainly high priorities for them and other than that. It looks like this is to split kind of between the things they're interested in or more interested in, feedback that you receive. So if I'm understanding it, the virtual career exploration is not particularly in alignment with their request, correct?
Right. So that was one that the county submitted for feedback that we also submitted to General Assembly. And our idea there was a fairly broad strokes career exploration suitable for K through 12, to really just give a high-level overview of careers in Forsyth County. And Golden Leaf prefers their workforce development efforts to be very focused, specific, and limited to high school.
So they like that?
Yes.
Okay, I got it. Okay. Any other questions for Andrea?
Yeah, I do have a question. So for the simulation lab, where is that supposed to be located?
At the Maisy Woodruff Center.
Okay.
They'll do some refurbishments.
Fair enough. Thank you.
I don't have a question, but Andrea, you always do a great job. But Matt, wow. Well, you caught on quick, didn't you, son? That was good.
Thank you, Matt. Go ahead.
Just one question about the Tanglewood Business Park development. This submission doesn't come with a finalized site plan for the work, does it?
So we're asking for 1.19. So for some context, the endorsement, the list of products we will apply for, it's due next week. The actual application is not due until the end of October. And so we have some outstanding due diligence work that will create that site plan and assign developmental costs. So what we're asking today, we can ask Golden Leaf for 1.5 million total, and so we're asking for your approval to apply for up to 1.19, so that whatever those development costs come back, as we can assign those more specifically.
The reason I ask about that in particular is I know that there's strong community interest in the specifics of how that park develops, and I think it would be very good for us to take the plans to the public for comment before we approve a final development plan for the park.
Yeah, and so I think these dollars will get the infrastructure to the site, because the final site plan really will be industry-specific. And while it is a site that has a lot of interest in, we are very focused on making sure that the right type of industry, right type of business lands there. And so we do not have a specific development plan in place, and it'll be more industry-specific as far as where the lines are serving a specific site. What was shown on the screen was really the conceptual design, and what it does is it takes advantage of the ready-to-build sites just from the topography. So it kind of develops out the topography as it is, but whether that's one large building that takes up most of the site, or whether it's a couple of different sites, really remains to be seen. And we're going to let the right user, the very select, very, what's a good word? We fully understand that that is a very unusual site in Forsyth County, and it needs a very specific type industry that will be very integrated with the surroundings, I think.
If, Mr. County Manager, if you could provide me with the specifics, sort of the binding specifics that we'll be submitting as a part of the application, so that I can share those to interested community.
Absolutely. Thank you. So let me just follow up on that. So I'm assuming that before submission, we're going to actually have a site plan that will indicate, I mean, I know, we already have the lift station, we've got the spine road, we've got the sort of the general sort of, the conceptual lots. I assume we're talking about something like a water line running across the back. We're probably talking about natural gas line availability, which I don't know whether it is or isn't, but to see if that happens. But it's not holding dollars in advance to wait for, you know, an owner to do that. It would say it is providing this access. And I would not see such an infrastructure, including individual, like the assumption that individual extension sewer lines, you know, like to get to four or five places versus one or two or whatever. So I think perhaps what I would have interest in is seeing what that plan looks like before we send it in to grant, just to see what the plan includes that we're asking Golden Leaf to fund. I think what the county manager's saying is that it's basically generic utility infrastructure access and not tied into industry-specific or user-specific, like any user's got to have these basics.
Or even site-specific. It's really one step closer to a shovel-ready site.
Yeah, but it'd just be helpful. That would be, it could even be done with just a map somewhere. We don't have to do it formally unless everyone would like it formally, but I think it's more of a request for some of us would like to just see it before it's submitted. I think what we're talking about approving today is submission.
Yes. And the submission is based off of the RFIs that we do give for Tanglewood. There are some that will take one glance at the company and just say, we know this won't be a good fit, and actually not submit the site. But the ones that we do think could really fit in, we've just taken their average job numbers, industrial capacity, and that's what all of these numbers are based off of. It's not one specific sector.
And the reason, Mr. Chairman, that I had asked specifically for what we anticipate we will be doing, regardless of who eventually comes to the we anticipate we will be doing regardless of who eventually, you know, comes to the site, is pretty much every time somebody turns a spade of earth near that location, I get contact saying, what's happening? What's going on? You know, so I need to be able to, you know, give an informed answer to that.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions?
Move approval of the proposal tied to our chairman's suggestions throughout the discussion.
Motion by Commissioner Pliler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizenhut. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item 11 is related to the ARPA funding. It is a resolution approving execution agreement with the North Carolina Rush Trag Soccer Club Incorporated to construct a footsail court with American Rescue Plan Act funds. It would provide $43,780 for this purpose and it will be located at Old Town Elementary.
Move approval.
Motion's approved by Commissioner Pliler.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. We have several contractual matters. Item 12 is a resolution authorizing execution agreement between Forsyth County and Stryker Sales LLC. It provides service and maintenance of life pack cardiac monitor and defibrillators and the Lucas chest compression devices that we have on the ambulances. It is a three-year agreement not to exceed $221,097.
From the bottom of my heart, I move approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Pliler. Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement to provide temporary employment services for one-stop early voting and elections response to the Forsyth County Board of Elections. It is a not to exceed $667,924 contract for FY '24 and $1,549, I think is my handwriting, in fiscal year 2025. And it will provide temporary staffing for the '23 municipal election, the '24 primary. It provides capacity if there is a second primary for '24 and for the general election in FY '24.
Move approval.
The whole package.
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Pliler. Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item 14 is a resolution ratifying and awarding a contract for the provision and installation of a rental chiller at the Public Safety Center. As you know, we have six units in there and they were having major problems. And, and because of where we are with the heat of the summer and what have you, this is for a 90-day period, not to exceed $86,049. There is an additional provision if we've got to run along on that as we do the repairs to those facilities.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Pliler. Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item 15 is a resolution authorizing a quantum root payment to EBSCO Industries Incorporated. This would authorize us to go ahead and pay out this contract for FY '23 in the amount of $67,179.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Pliler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizenhut. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item 16 is a property matter. It's a resolution accepting the highest offer to purchase county own real property by negotiated offer advertisement upset bid procedure. Received an offer, advertised it, did not get any upset bids. So, the amount was $20,000 to Do Dreams Incorporated. I think the tax value of the property was 12,000 or 13,000. So, it's over what we had normally.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Pliler. Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We've got one appointment Forsyth County, Forsyth Technical Community College Board of Trustees. Mr. Chairman, if you want to read it, essentially, had three applicants. Jimmy Fleyth was appointed by the governor. And so, he, he was removed from the item and then Commissioner McDaniel had expressed interest. So, she has been added in that.
The ballot's at the very bottom of your sack. So, would everyone please vote and our manager will pick it up.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Tanya McDaniel received unanimous vote.
All right. Congratulations. I know you represented well. All righty.
So, you've got several tax administration matters. Item 18, John, if you want to come up because you probably want to just mention any updates that we have. But item 18 is a resolution approving the tax collector's annual settlement for fiscal year 2022, '23 and prior years. You've got an order of Forsyth County Board of Commissioners in accordance with the listed general statutes to collect '22 and prior year taxes. And then you've got the order to collect the 2023 taxes. And I'll turn it over to John, but you probably, unless the attorney says something different, probably can take all of them in one motion.
Good afternoon Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity. Two weeks ago to give you the long presentation. Today, the only update is to, I know you're all anticipating when bills go out, and that would be tomorrow, following your vote today. So, as of tomorrow, we will have all of our bills on electronically on the website. And so, they're available to everyone there. And then, we will mail them tomorrow as well. Just to give you an idea, we have about 9,700 electronic bills that'll be going out. And then, the rest will be mailed, about 170,000 of those. I did want to show you, there was one comment or one concern earlier about being a little more clear on our tax jurisdictions about Lewisville Municipal versus Lewisville Fire and things like that. And so, I don't know if the, can you see the? I wanted to be able to show you how we've now, the part in yellow, talking about, we say Winston-Salem City Tax. That may not be all that newsworthy, but on like Walker Town, we say Walker Town Town Tax. And so, you will see Lewisville Town Tax or Clemmons Village Tax. And so, it provides more clarity for the public.
John, can you go back real quick to Winston-Salem? I'm sorry, I didn't see it very clearly. Fair enough. All right. That's what I need to see.
And, and so, we just added the word village or town or city in there to make sure that there was clarity between that versus a fire district tax. So, that's, that's one small change, but hopefully that'll provide clarity for the public as well.
Good. That's helpful. Having received one of those calls, couldn't quite interpret that this year. So, I'm pleased to see that clarity.
Yes. Wanted to point that out.
All right. Any other questions of John? Is there a motion to approve items 18, 19, and 20?
All moved.
Motion approved by Commissioner Pliler. Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Reports. Item 21, you got the May and June 2023 contribution base benefit cap report.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Pliler. Second by Commissioner Limble. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. You've got some added items that were based on closed session after the board reviewed performance for some staff that directly report up through the board. So, items 22 is the compensation for the county manager. Item 3 is a resolution adjusting the compensation to county attorney. And item 24, resolution adjusting the compensation of clerk to the board of county commissioners. I presume you could take all three of those together or you can take those separately. Mr. Chairman, however?
Move approval of all three.
We have a motion by Commissioner Pliler.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizenhut. And in the discussion part, I'd just like to say a thank you to all three of you for the outstanding work that you have performed over the past year. And all raises and compensation were certainly, were certainly justified and, and certainly have appreciated your service. So, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
On behalf of my colleagues, thank you for the opportunity to serve. I know we, we all are honored to, for this community and for this board specifically. So, with that, the only other item, added item we have is at your place. There's been a fair amount of conversation about it. And obviously, it was the subject of all the speakers today and it is support for, for the NAACP's gala. I think I'll say just kind of from the staff perspective, you know, I, I hope it was clear to, to the leadership of the NAACP that, that the participation in the gala from a table perspective was never an issue. This board does a lot of those type things. And so, you know, we, my general practice is if a request comes in to participate in an event like that, I'll call, make sure everybody's okay. If you want to have a table, then everybody's open to attend. This, you know, this was one where it was more of a sponsorship. So, it's more of something we would normally see in, in sort of the budget process. And so, there's been a fair amount of work. And I know Gordon's been handling a lot of it around trying to make sure that, because it's more than just participation in a, in an event, that the, that the legal authority's clearly there to do exactly what, of what we're being asked to do. And so, I can certainly let Gordon speak to that. You know, if the board wishes to approve it, I know the, the action in front of you that Gordon prepared doesn't speak, speaks in general terms, but not specifically to the gala. I think the, the use that he had identified that was the clearest, most obvious, clear authority was with Food Pantry and sort of that kind of thing. But, so his, his was really tied to that. You know, he can certainly speak to, to clearly what they were asking you to do is, is support for scholarships, which I think is a little bit trickier. But, but anyway, so, you know, consistent with the board's policy, if you wish to, you know, there's sort of a procedure you need to step through if you want to take action on that today, if you want to talk about it further. I think general conversations were that we would maybe discuss it even in the briefing session, but I'll.
Yeah. I'll make just a, a augment, expand on the county manager's comments. I, I think you all are aware that back in February, we adopted a, actually a meeting procedure and ordinance, if you will, a policy about how our meetings would run. And it basically talks about, and, and by the way, it came up because of a, a request that was presented during a meeting to do, make a pretty major change in something that had not been briefed. And we all said, we need to, you know, we didn't do it that day. We all said, we need to have a kind of a way to look at all this. And, and it's a pretty detailed policy. And it does talk about briefing twice before, or if it hadn't been briefed once before. And it gets into certain rules and it talks about anything that's non-emergency. So, I think the, and I've had an opportunity to speak with Gordon, particularly about the purpose issue. And I think a lot of it has a lot to do with how the scholarships work if it's a scholarship issue. He may comment on, I want to let him speak for himself. But in terms of, in order to do something today, we have to do some suspension of rules. We have to have a two-thirds majority to even get the proposal out. And then, basically, in terms of with the information we have about purpose, because we just can't give money to individuals by any means. And we're certainly trying to get a service or a, something to happen from that. So, I think the scholarship one may be able to work. And I listened carefully today. It made me think that some of the scholarship money in the past has gone to offset sort of expenses. That would mean that the scholarship was going to the person and that would be problematic. However, if it's going to, as a lot of scholarships work, if, if, if it was exclusive, as an example, to Winston-Salem State, it might be possible where a person could be a scholarship recipient. They send in evidence of their tuition bill. Payment is made to the university. I think if that were clear, then that might work. And I, I agree with, there's been a lot of, lot of discussion over the last couple of weeks on this. And I think that personally, I'd rather this occurred during the budget cycle. However, because the way it came to us and this, that, and the other, I have, I have no problem making some support for this year, but it needs to be consistent with statutes and, and to be, be a part of that. And the, the amount, I received an initial letter about that, hard copy. And, and actually, I mean, what was in my letter? It said a request for $5,000. I spoke briefly with President Jabbar before, as he got here this morning, I mean, he got here today. And he claims it was for 10. And just because 10 was one of the sponsorship levels, I'm getting old, my memory's a little less fuzzy, but I remember numbers pretty well. Most of you know that. And it was about $1,000 in the letter I got. Now, maybe that was unintentional, but that's what it was. So, I think in order to clear up the issues of the how and what, it sure would be good if we could kind of have a briefing cycle. Both, we have the first briefing today. This is kind of almost covering that part. And then, the second, we could add next week if we wanted to have the, we had the scholarship committee person speak to us today. And perhaps, you know, our attorney could speak with her some prior to next week. And she may want to come. And we could actually brief the item and discuss more about the mechanics of how the scholarship works, whether it could be done as, as something from the commission. And then, it could actually be an item on the August the 10th meeting in our normal meeting cycle if we did it that way. So, any further discussion just generally? I'll just invite some comments on that.
Yes, Chairman. I would like to make some, some comments, please. So, first of all, I'm going to be speaking from a professional angst feelings that I have with regard to this whole matter. First of all, I'm not staff. So, to create a resolution with my name on it is an error. Again, the act was for five students, 10,000 scholarships. Now, I can only predict that these letters went out early, end of April to all of us and the county as well. Letters were sent out late April, all elected officials throughout the county and the city and the state was sent these, received letters. So, I will say that, Don, I was under medical leave at the time that you emailed out an email. And it could be an issue regarding an open meeting, or open meeting laws in regards to the $5,000 that I was, did not, I didn't say that I was okay. I will say, Dudley, I am a little disappointed in you and with my feelings with, I feel like you've put the NAACP and our president through what I would describe as an underground railroad because you need it. And it's your right to confirm that the NAACP does not support elected officials or candidates. And also that there was not a conflict with me. So, I appreciate that exercise. I will just say that we still struggle. We don't need food, Gordon. And I appreciate your worth of work in making sure that we, you protect us from Pearl. But our children need support. And I will say that from our NACO conference that myself, Vice Chair Wizenhut, and Commissioner Woodbury attended, the motto was forward together. We connect, we inspire, and we lead. With the NAACP, we're going forward together, not one step back. So, whatever you decide today, if we need to put that on a briefing, you brief it once, you brief it twice. We will come back and we will vote collectively. Thank you.
Would like to make one very brief comment because there was a couple of discussions today. I actually found the email that I sent to you all. It'll take me a second. I'll get back to it. And because it was, I just wanted to make it perfectly clear that there was no issue regarding a, let me find it close, regarding an open meetings law. Because basically, I shared with you, I think it's in a copy here.
Chair Martin, why are you finding the email? May I just make a point just by way of timeline?
You may. And I found it. But go ahead.
Okay. No, go ahead.
No, no, you, well, yeah, I'll close this out. I sent you all an email entitled Couple of Things. I shared three things with you. One had to do with both, both my wife and I getting ill from a trip we got. And then, I've had some discussion about certain committees that whether we need a commissioner that should serve on some committees, should we have some that we should not, or should we? And suggested an exercise that we could all do. And the third item, since it's very short, I'll actually read it. It says, finally, I received a letter. It says, "Finally, I received a letter, um, from the NAACP asking whether the commissioners would like to be a sponsor of the Annual Freedom Fund banquet on August the 4th, 7:00 PM, McDeal Banquet Hall, Anderson Center, WSSU. This banquet raises funds to provide five scholarships to deserving students and offers various community programs that make the Winston-Salem community a better place to live." In fact, that was a quote from the letter, which did not suggest anything regarding, it suggested the broad per things that the Winston, that the, uh, NAACP does. President Al Jabar has requested that we provide a $5,000 sponsorship, gold level, which would provide a VAP table of aid to recognize the banquet. Sponsorships range from 1,000 to 10. I think that we should be a sponsor and fine with a $5,000 level. I'll check with you all next Tuesday. I was not soliciting to vote or asking people to do that. I said that the next Thursday I'd be here and talk to you all. Just want to make sure that part is clear.
Again, it's how we all interpret it and construed it, so.
Well, just want to be clear. Yes, Commissioner Woodbury.
Thank you. In lieu of, um, I think the gala is August the 4th, and there may be some concern about the timeline with it going through a briefing session. The one thing that I would, um, just like to make known is that generally, the scholarship dollars are not given to students until probably, you know, end of August. So we, I think we do have some time for it to go through a briefing cycle, if that was the concern of especially the NAACP members in regards to whichever way we end up voting. But as it relates to the cycle of how colleges give out the financial aid packages, we're willing to the end of August before any dollars would be dispersed.
Thank you, Commissioner Woodbury, for that, but, so that I'm clear and for the record, I just wanted to ensure that it lands on a briefing twice and so that it's voted on. Thank you.
Commissioner Bessie, and then I think we'll have Gordon have an opportunity to say something.
Thank you. I was prepared to make a motion to, um, amend the agenda today, to suspend the rules to do so, uh, and to ask for consideration of $5,000 contribution to the scholarships for individuals. Uh, I just learned today that there are, are statutory North Carolina legal problems with doing in that fashion. So I, I support briefing it twice and bringing it back for consideration on the August 10th agenda, so that we can explore how to appropriately, uh, frame and structure, uh, any contribution, uh, so that it, uh, it's carried out in a way consistent with North Carolina law.
Great. And perhaps our attorney would like to say a word or two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and first I'd like to apologize to Commissioner McDaniel if, if what's before you misrepresents the intention of, of, of this. As you know, we, we, for whatever reason, this is, this wasn't briefed, and so what was put together was done at the last second, and when you do things at the last second, a lot of times they don't turn out well, so I apologize for that. The, the legal concern is simply, we can only do what the state lets us do. We're not a home rule county like they are in some other states. And so one of the things we have to comply with is county programs can't just benefit individuals, they need to be more broad than that. And so what we have here is a request to give $2,000 to each of five individuals. So that's something we really need to look into to see if there's a way to do that. What I proposed, if, if, if the board wanted to support the NAACP, was a program that clearly we can support, which is the Food Pantry. But if you don't want to do that, and you want to go back to the scholarships, that's something that really is going to require more study in terms of how the money is dispersed, how the scholarship recipients were chosen, and, and that kind of information. So that's something we could look into.
Thank you, Gordon, for, um, your apology, and, um, I would, I'm okay with you doing your research before we have our briefing and our briefing and our meeting, so that you can be very clear. And I think, um, I would agree with Commissioner Woodbury's, um, suggestion in terms of maybe sending those dollars to the schools, if that's where that needs to land. So thank you, and, and I appreciate, um, I would look forward to that research in terms of what we can do. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask you a question? Are we reopening the budget process? We just adopted a budget, what, three weeks ago? Have we reopened the budget? If, if we have, I've never known us to do that before, but I would just like to know.
Commissioner Wizinhut, with all due respect, we do a lot of things on this board that I've been here for the last five years, so I don't think that this is out of order. What I do think is very disrespectful to utilize, um, a minority organization such as the NAACP that has done such phenomenal work. I mean, um, and you saw that these students today were very bright, um, and they talked about, um, how this NAACP scholarship was so very helpful to them. So I apologize, things are not, um, in order as what they normally are, but again, we have the right to suspend those rules, but we're not asking for that today. Again, we're, I don't mind, and I'm a rule follower, and Gordon knows this, um, that if we need to go through the process, then I will, I don't have a problem doing that. And you can vote however you want, that's your conscience.
I'm insulted that you would think that I'm saying this because it's the NAACP. I'm saying this because it's reopening our budget process and that we aren't allowed to give scholarships. Uh, but I'm insulted that every time something's brought up, you have to think that is, that I'm, I'm against the NAACP or anything else, and that's not true at all. I don't care who comes in here after the budget and asks for money, unless it is a county department. Now, I, if county departments have to come back from time to time, that's fine, that's our job to keep this county running. But I cannot believe that we have to give scholarship money when there are so many needy kids in this county, and race has nothing to do with the need of some of these kids.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts.
Well, I, I'd just like to share that we need the details, and we'll consider it, and maybe we're not, and, and to speak to the Vice Chair's point, we're not reopening the budget.
So how are we going to, how are we going to, what is?
We are considering an item outside of the budget, and that can be done. We have the authority to do that. And I, it's so, we can do it, but clearly we need to do, that could have, this could have been, I think every person at this D S would agree, the whole thing could have been handled better, and it was not, so.
Should have been brought up at budget time.
I, I appreciate you sharing that. Thank you. All righty, I think, uh, we are ready to adjourn the meeting and jump into, do we need a, do we need a little break for, between the briefing session?
We may, I was, I was just going to, just one clarification, because I do know there's interest in attending the gala, both, um, by some board members and by staff, and so I presume it's satisfactory to go ahead and get a table, uh, for that event.
I think that is routine, we have discussed that, we've done for various events, and that would be great, and there'd be some folks, and we will at least be represented at a table, yes. Move and take a break.
But I just wanted to be clear that we're still following the, the other briefing, briefing, and then back, okay?
Yeah, the larger sponsorship item will be briefed.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So is it for 5,000 or 10,000 or what? Does anybody know? I've heard both.
The, the letter I received said five.
Okay.
The sponsorships on the form that came with it ranged from one to 10, which is what I shared in my email, and I, that was the request, and that's where I said I was okay.
Mr. Manager, we're going to have some briefing items also.
Yeah, we'll do our, we do have a briefing, we, um, the rest of what we have today is a, a briefing. We don't, we have one public hearing matter on that, but we are going to be talking about that in closed session anyway, and so it's just a very quick review of, um, uh, you know, it's just my kind of brief overview of what's on this next agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we take a 15-minute break. Can we get back in 10 minutes? So, I mean, this is, this is, I think, a fairly short, you know, briefing, and, and probably we could just take whatever's required to do, a little short 10 minutes? All right, 10 minutes.